Good evening, I'm going to call our May 3rd, 2017 meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to note that we had a longtime employee of the Milton Public Schools who passed away this week. Ms. Leona O'Rourke was hired in April 2003 as a paraprofessional to work at the Cunningham Elementary School. She continued her career at Cunningham and later became an educational assistant. In 2015, Ms. O'Rourke moved to the Calicoon Elementary School and supported the preschool and elementary children. She worked tirelessly to support the children that she served, and her commitment to the students, parents, guardians, and staff of Milton Public Schools was admirable. She'll be greatly missed by the Milton Public Schools. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Alright, so moving to agenda, see approved agenda, I'm going to make one change. I'm going to add a C under Chairs report that is transgender and immigration status update.
Can I ask, can we strike transportation?
Sure.
And to put it for the next session, because yeah, I'll have more updates for another meeting.
Alright. So with those changes, we consider the agenda approved. Citizen speak? Excellent. Superintendent's report?
Thank you Chairman Donahue. First, I'm very proud to introduce to the school committee invited tonight our Boston Globe's Elastic Art and Writing Award winners from Milton High School with their very talented teacher Karen Hughes here tonight. This is again one of the highlights of the school year. Would you join us at the table? We always have discussions while they are getting settled. Their artwork goes right into Boston and some of it to New York City, but they're very talented and Karen Hughes and these Milton High School gifted and talented students have, are going to share with you. Karen will share with you the program and they'll share with you their artwork and how they've really submitted and competed across the state. Welcome.
Thank you for having us.
And before you get started, I'm going to ask, would you grab a microphone so that the folks at home can hear you?
Sure.
And then the microphones don't work well in here, so we'll need you to use your teacher voices and...
Performance voices.
Yes, performance voices, thank you.
So let me introduce the seniors first because we should give you an idea of who they are. We have all seniors, but one student and she's a junior now, so you know who she is. This is Sidney Nguyen. She is a senior. Rosalyn Smith, a junior. Lenny Minyas, senior. Amy Flavich, senior. Sarah Lamb, senior. Rachel Tomaszewski, senior. And Joseph Crowe is also a senior. And last year, we had a lot of winners. So there was quantity, I think, versus quality because this year, we didn't...
Do the students want to take the other mics so that...
Are always a problem.
Do you want to take that other mic out and make sure that's on?
See if that works, yeah.
Alright. Last year, we had quite a few winners, but we did not have any national winners. So I would just like each of these guys to stand up. They have a photograph of their work, a lot of them are photographs, and they can say what award they won. That would be, you'd be so kind.
And may I interrupt you, Ms. Hughes?
Sure.
Perhaps because the mic wasn't on, when the students stand up for the viewing public watching, they'd identify themselves.
That would be wonderful.
Because the viewing public may have missed that with the mic not working.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Sidney Nguyen and I'm a senior. And this photograph is called "Old Friends Catching Up" and it won a silver key.
Hi. I'm Rosalyn Smith. I'm a junior. I have two photos. This one is called "Ava" and it won an honorable mention. And this one is called "Saturday" and it also won an honorable mention.
My name is Lenny Minyas and this is a photograph I did for my self-portrait and it won an honorable mention with my whole portfolio.
Hi, my name's Amy and I'm a senior. And for this photo, I called it "Aphilia," inspired by my English class, and it won an honorable mention.
Hi, I'm Sarah Lamb and I have a photograph titled "Fog" and I won a regional gold key and a national silver medal. And I also have a print called "All Eyes On Me."
Oh, that's cool.
And, thank you. It won a regional gold key and a national gold medal.
I'm Rachel and I have this photo here called "This Artist Is A Siren" and it won a regional gold key. This is an exam, two examples of a portfolio that I won, I think I've won a gold key regionally and then a national silver medal for it. And it was a portfolio of indirect portraits of everyone in my family.
Hello, my name is Joe Crowley and this photo's called "What's Ahead Of Us Is A Blurry Horizon" and I won an honorable mention for it.
Can I ask a question? Would you mind, can we, can you just, can you pass them up here so we could just see them? I promise we won't wreck them.
Maybe Mr. Crowley could collect them.
We have, we have a few students missing. If I can just say their names as well. We are missing Morgan Smith, who won a gold key for her photograph and a honorable mention for another photograph, another gold key as well. And we are missing Hannah O'Toole, who won an honorable mention for her photograph. And we are missing Audrey Estevez, who won a silver key for her photograph. And I'll pass those around as well.
So Ms. Hughes, could you share where the artwork is now?
So the artwork is back home. They exhibited at the Boston Globe at the Transportation Building this year. And they have so many winners in the state and nationally that they only can take the gold keys for exhibition and they don't take any portfolios. The portfolios that students won, all my seniors in AP Studio Art participated in submitting an eight-piece portfolio, which had to be a series of works. And those portfolios are judged against all other seniors in the state and then they go nationally. So the portfolios hold a little more weight to them and sometimes we risk submitting their eight pieces for portfolios and they'll submit other pieces indirectly for single viewing only. So they have more students, some submitted over 10 pieces, others definitely all submitted eight pieces. And this year, we had a total of 320 entries from all my classes. So it's nine through 12 because I do believe that competition is open to all ninth through 12 graders and we should all compete and see what happens. Some years, our younger students win, other years, our older students win. They're judged in, at the Globe. This year, it was taken over from the museum school. So it really is something that we look forward to because we can tell how we do every year and how, and they feel confident, I believe they feel confident after seeing their work win all these, this huge competitions so that they can use it for colleges and telling their colleges about using awards brings scholarships in as well.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Rell.
So can you also explain for the viewers at home, I know you just mentioned a little bit, but do they, just like do the students, when they take, do they take photography all year and then do you work with you to decide what they're going to submit? And I also was wondering that, is it all public and private schools, like across the board that go up to the national level? I don't think as many people in Milton are aware of, I mean, I know that they know we have a great art program, but you know, of the accolades that these students are, you know, are winning and you know, the level that they're being assessed against and things like that. So if you can talk a little bit about the process, I think that would be interesting, yeah.
So the actual history of the competition, it is art and it is writing. And any teacher from, you can also do homeschooling. In Massachusetts, in our state, whether it's parochial, private, or public schools, apply and submit. And students can apply on their own, but teachers used to be given a very short list of, we used to have 20 entries per teacher in all the schools. And that's how they used to be judged. That was 17 years ago. And then now it is completely different. It has changed. So it is as many students as you want from middle school and high school. And the high school ones have the scholarships attached to them. So it makes sense as they're applying to college to really have this kind of competition under their belt. It is what, we don't do it to win, we do it to see how we do. And we do it to compare our program quality-wise and the rigor of the program as far as, you know, compared to other, other schools, other districts. We always look at Milton Academy. We kind of have this, I have, I always count. Last year, we beat them. We were, we beat Welzy last year, so that was kind of my, my triumph. But for me, it's not just about competing and, and winning, it's more about the process of entering your work and kind of taking a risk. And these students take a risk every day. So their artwork is a personal narrative. Their artwork comes from their experiences. When they hold a camera and they look through the lens, it's through their eyes. So they're very personal pieces that, that they show. And sometimes they ask me, "Do you really think I can do this? I can show this?" And I'm like, "Yes," because that, that's what they like to see. They like to see something that really holds a huge narrative quality and they're able to express themselves, sometimes with words, sometimes without. So in, in the AP class that I have, I have 22 students. And all these guys are in AP, except for Roz, who'll be in AP next year. And we work together all year. But we've been working for four years. And I have to say, these guys have been working for a lot longer than four years on their art. So we have to credit middle school, we have to credit elementary school. Sorry I'm being long-winded.
No, no, no.
But it's the one big chance we get to kind of talk about the program.
Yeah, that's great.
And when they go through the class, the entire year for AP, I try to set them up with, what are you going to show people at the end of this course? They have to submit a portfolio, they're due tomorrow, they're actually due Friday, I told them it was due tomorrow. Of 24 pieces of artwork. And they're supposed to do it within a year. That's a lot of work. And it's not a full year. We're not in school a full year. So these guys come in and they're kind of like, "Oh, it's our senior year, we're taking AP art, this is going to be a breeze." And it hits them about the first day of school when I say, "Okay, now show me all your summer work." And they're going, "Can I, can I go tomorrow?" And just having a sense of community and having a class that shares their work with each other is really important. That's what makes a school into a community. That's what makes us feel like we're a family and that we grow together. And they critique their own work and each other's work. And they bounce ideas off. Sometimes the back row doesn't come to my desk for a couple of weeks and then they come up and they show me stuff. So they work on their own. They usually don't, if they're taking photographs, they're not taken in school. They're taken outside of the classroom.
Ms. Hughes, for those who are watching who might not understand, AP, would you explain what the Advanced Placement Art Class consists of and what it means?
Sure. So Advanced Placement Studio Art is, has three different portfolios students can submit. They can submit a drawing portfolio, which is straight drawing and painting on a two-dimensional surface, but it deals with mark making and it doesn't deal with anything else added to the canvas or the composition. 2D, two-dimensional portfolio is a portfolio that encapsulates photography. You can also use mixed media. Sarah showed you her, a print that was called "All Eyes On Me," that was a linoleum print. So we're looking at two-dimensional versus a drawing portfolio. And then there is a three, a three-dimensional portfolio, which we do not participate in just because we don't have the equipment or the, or the tools at this time to do that in, in this building. So I do apologize for that, but we try to focus on, on, you know, the two things that we do well, which is drawing and, and the 2D portfolio. So they have all year to complete the portfolios. There are 24 pieces submitted digitally. They work continuously from September till May. And then Friday, we have these huge portfolios. So their 24 pieces are digitally submitted in a portfolio template that College Board provides for us. And then they have to submit five actual pieces of their works in these big portfolios that we mail out to AP and those get sent back to students in July with their scores. For each of the, there's three categories. There's a breadth category, and I don't say breath or bread, it's breadth. It means a variety. 12 pieces that show a huge variety of work they're able to do. There's a concentration portfolio piece to it, that's also 12 pieces. It has to be a series and it must be an exploration that the students explore their own ideas. And they, they have to pick a concept and explore it. I can't tell them what to do because it has to come from them. And then the final piece is five actual pieces called quality and they can come from either concentration or their breadth piece. And that is how, so they have three scores that AP provides at College Board and they score three times each section. And some people just score concentration, some people just score breadth, some people just score quality. And they do the average for all three groups and then they put them together. And the scores for studio art are one through six, not five. So there is a way to get a six. I've not seen it yet, but I can't say, never say never because you never know. We've had this year with two national winners, we never have had two national winners. So both Sarah and Rachel to be together as national winners is huge.
And then for the viewing public, those students, I don't know when they're six, is it four, five, six, but for five, it's three, four, five, students earn college credit?
Yes. So most colleges accept a three-year higher and they can actually not have to, they do get college credit for that, for that portion. If they're going to art school, they probably won't allow them to skip anything, but just to have that and then they can brag about it is fine.
I just want to say congratulations to all of you. I like to speak for former school committee member Kristen Bailey-Jones when I say how important art is as a subject. It, it is so important because it's not just art as its own profession, but doctors and scientists and writers and so many different people use art as a form of expression in their own profession. And I, I just want to congratulate all of you. I see some of you I've known since you were in elementary school. And I congratulate you on your senior year and I hope that you will continue to pursue your, your art passion. And also want to congratulate all your teachers and your parents who have nurtured that love that you have for art. And I hope you continue to pursue it no matter what else you pursue. And the best of luck to you that are graduating.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Congratulations.
Anyone want to add anything?
Karen.
Yeah, unbelievable.
Yeah, congratulations.
It's amazing.
I know, see, I, I want to see this.
Thank you for catching me.
Next, I'd like to invite to the table our World Language Director, Dr. Martine Fisher, and our high school Latin teacher, Madeline Murphy. And our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Personnel, Janet Sheehan, had a family situation right before the meeting. And so she said, "You're in good hands Superintendent Gormly." Dr. Fisher and Ms. Murphy will take right over on this field trip proposal that is in your packet. And so it doesn't take an approval tonight, it's one of those first presentations.
Okay.
Thank goodness.
So today, I am speaking at our Department of Word Languages and I'm here with Ms. Murphy, who is our AP Latin teacher. We are here to present what we hope will be the 2018 Word Language Educational Trips Abroad. You, the Word Language Department has organized overseas trips before, but you might remember that in 2013, our Spanish and French teachers took our students to Paris and to Barcelona. Next year, the Latin team, and Ms. Murphy will give you 2018 minute, will take or is hoping to take our students to...
Can I talk to Mike Lynch about this?
We are, so we are talking about a trip to Italy this time, organized by the Latin teachers of our department. We usually try to alternate the trips organized by my department with the trips organized by the Social Studies Department, obviously, to maximize the students' opportunity. And as you know, we just have a group organized by Mr. Kelly, who came back from Europe. They went there for the spring break. And Ms. Murphy actually participated in this trip, which gives a good first-hand experience of what we are presenting tonight. As a Word Language Director, I would like to underscore the value of such educational experience, which are of course in complete alignment with the standards and the philosophy of our departments. The benefit of this kind of initiatives are numerous, but I would just mention that such travels put obviously the languages and the cultures that our students study in meaningful and real-life context. That student have the opportunity to have authentic encounters with people from other countries in safe and positive settings, which are obviously very, very important nowadays. That international trips, of course, promote understanding and appreciation of other cultures. It's therefore opening doors to the world, I would say, but also to diversity and to potential educational and professional opportunities and interests. Finally, I would say that it allows students, many of them for the first time, to go abroad. And we selected the company we are going to talk about, which happened to be the same company that the Social Studies Department is using because they are offering a very comprehensive financial plan, which allows family to pay by installment, which I and we find particularly important. So I'm going to let Ms. Murphy give you some details and we'll try to...
Thank you very much for having us tonight. As Martine said, I'm Madeline Murphy and I've been teaching Latin here at Milton High School for the past four years. And throughout the past four years, what I noticed was that more and more students and even parents have been asking about a trip to Rome or a trip to Pompeii, somewhere where the students can really, you know, see that Latin come to life. So I started researching some companies and in particular EF. I myself, when I was a Latin student in high school, went on an EF tour to Rome and it was life-changing. It made me want to become a Latin teacher. And then I, I realized that the school was already using EF in the Social Studies Department. So I ended up chaperoning this, this year's trip to Italy, Spain, and France. And I found the program phenomenal. So I just wanted to walk you through a couple of details of our trip. But overall, we're going to be trying to do everything very similar to this year's trip, which was so successful. The itinerary is going to be to Rome and Pompeii. And the reason why I picked these two places is because you find in the Latin curriculum, it really relates to each level of Latin learners. The students will start in their textbook series, even at the middle school, learning about the city of Pompeii. So the trip includes the Sorrento region, they'll be able to tour that ancient city. And then they'll also be flying into Rome, they'll be able to see the Colosseum, the Roman Forum, and learn about all of the places and all of the inscriptions that they've been translating in class all these years. I'm sure you have questions about safety and about finances. So I will say that we're going, we're planning on taking about 35 students and about five chaperones. So there'll be a five, excuse me, six to seven, six to one student chaperone ratio. Students will always be chaperoned, they will never be on their own at any point, even in the hotel. And we have a very strict room check process every evening. So we need to make sure we've, we've seen every student, they're in their room, they're safe for the night. The tour, the group will always stay together throughout each tour. So generally speaking, this company will provide a bus for the students and that will be the same bus driver the whole time. So they'll have designated pickups where the whole group will meet in the city, they'll go back to the hotel, and then the bus will take us down to the Pompeii, the Sorrento region. And we'll be traveling over to the island of Capri by ferry. So it'll be, it'll be a really incredible experience for them. Again, very safe and hopefully very educational. The cost is about $3,300. It is affordable when, when you think that it's an all-inclusive, so that does include their breakfast, their dinners, all of their transportation, and the accommodations. The only thing the students will be required to pay will be for their lunch and some of their spending money. We do have 35 students who are interested and ready to enroll in the program. So we're hoping that they can start their payment process very soon and they'll be, as Martine mentioned, they'll be able to, you know, pay in installations.
And there will be a tour guide all along, the same person picking up the group at the airport, bringing it back at the airport.
Yes, the tour guide stays right when we get off the airplane. They're there to greet us and then right when we get onboard that, or go through security, they'll say goodbye to the students. So the chaperones don't have to worry about navigating the cities, all of that's taken care of through the company. It would be the chaperone's job to keep the students safe, to keep count. Every chaperone will be counting their six students constantly when we're moving and traveling throughout the cities.
I was looking in detail at, at safety and which shows EF because it's a very, very big company, the biggest company in the states. They are based in Cambridge and they are very organized in other countries. So they have numbers, we can talk, we can call day and night, they actually give a tag, I suppose, to students. Can you explain that?
Each student will receive a wristband that will have the EF tour number, but it will also have our, eventually when we know who the tour guide is, it'll also have their cellphone number. And what the company will do is they, the kids will have that, they should have that with them at all times. But there's no reason for any student to be separated from the group at any point, that would just be for emergencies.
You can tell Ms. Murphy just came back from the trip. She's, you sound like you're still on the trip. And this is where we're going tomorrow and this is what's going to happen. And the reports are from parents and staff and most importantly, students. It was a phenomenal trip. School community members are always very, very interested in the time that you have between now and the trip to do fundraising so that students who don't have, their families don't have the available funds. Could you speak to any plans you have yet for fundraising within the school?
So what I will be putting together, hopefully right after the AP Latin exam is over, is something very similar to what the students received this year. I think that in the past, what has helped the students most financially is to send out what we call Dear Friend Letters to friends and family. As you can look through, what, what I'll be doing is I'll be selecting, you know, various costs, whether it's transportation, hotel, you know, a dinner in, in Pompeii. And then students could send it out to friends and family and the friends and family could see what, you know, what their money could, could gain for some of these kids. So I think that overall, this is going to be the best way for them to fundraise. We can talk about a few other little fundraisers with the students, but I think, you know, judging by how many students are going on the trip and the overall cost for each judging by how many students are going on the trip and the overall cost for each student, this tends to be the most effective. Yes?
I, I think that that would be an effective way for some kids to, to get donations, but it strikes me that, that the students who could probably least swing the thirty-three hundred dollars pro, might not have relations or friends that they would want to send that out to, to try to earn money. So I'm interested in those other little pieces that you referred to, because it seems that, to me, that even if you paid it over ten months or something, that for some families, three hundred and thirty dollars a month for all of those consecutive months would be a lot of money.
It's significant, it's a significant amount of money. We've been brainstorming a little bit, and I've been trying to do just what the, the trip has done last year, sort of a model. One of the biggest reasons why we go with this company is because they do offer the installations, and we try to set it up so far in advance that the students who are very interested in may not be able to afford it. There's also myself, when I was in high school, maybe able to get a summer job or maybe even a job throughout the year and try to help save some of that money. We have, we're open to suggestions, but there are also other fundraisers, even if we made a couple of thousand, it wouldn't make too much of a dent in when you look at how many students are actually attending the trip. So I do find that we tried to go with the, the cheaper company that offers that payment plan for them.
But to Dr. Craighead's point, I know the music department is famous for selling the fruit, so perhaps Principal Jet and I will sit down with you.
Okay.
I'll tell you a success story as a plug. We have two students at Milton High who are going to the national competition in Kentucky for debate. And so they came up with a few fundraising ideas that weren't successful. So the, we said, why don't you sell water at town meeting? So the first, I said, you're going to go, because the football team would go, right? So the debate team's going to go. So, but I'll give you enough fundraisers that you're going to raise the money. They shared this with Ms. Verella. So the first day, their container was on the ground and their, and their signs were on the ground. So last, and they didn't do too well. So last night, when I went by, they said, Ms. Cornley, we're doing great. They put their container up top, they put their signs behind them, and they're doing really well, selling water. So perhaps if we met with you, reported back to the school committee, because it is important to us. I know somebody in our offices, and the child is going to dedicate the summer money. But to Dr. Craighead's point, for, if we put out, you know, ten or twenty ideas between now and the time to assess maybe not being able to earn the three thousand, but three thousand is, they might be able to raise the three thousand. And for some students, they might not need it, so we could target those who need it. But I'll work with you and come up with a list, and we'll present it. But the water, so one quick story, and I promise I won't go on. We heard the cooking class was going to cook and sell water and food. And I said, well, get word to them, they can't do water. They can do the food, the cooking class, but the debate has the water.
Right.
And so we'll work with you. It's really important to this school committee and to me that no one is left out, because this amount of money is beyond their means.
I'm just going to pitch that I think, starting at graduation, which is upcoming in June, it's pretty hot in the fieldhouse, and there's a heck of a lot of people there. And if you sold a bucket bottle, you'd put a dent into it.
I agree with that. I agree. Very hot.
I'll buy five of them.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
I, I will say, one, one thing I did forget to mention was that we have, we have mentioned it to Latin students first, but we are also opening it to other students from other languages as well.
Excellent. Anything else?
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm new to this field trip business, but also underneath the, where language, another good news story, our crew team placed. And so this is one of those ones that you call an emergency, that you don't have pre and post and to ask questions. But I'm particularly pleased they're not leaving till after the SATs this Saturday. So I was very impressed with that. And I know Coach Hamel, and he's been with the Milton Public School Crew Team, and I think that you can see this is very thorough, just like the Word Language, how many adults to students, the accommodations, and the funding.
So I will, I'll move approval of the Milton High School Boys' Crew Team Field Trip.
I'll second.
Second by Verella. Any discussion?
No, I'm just trying to read really rapidly.
Is it going to Connecticut?
Yeah, I know this part.
And, and I see here another, another staff member will be with them too. And perhaps a manageable amount, but we'll offer them assistance to sixty dollars.
Are they, are they driving down, like, together, like?
I would think so.
I've seen the cars leave. I don't know if they're using our one van or not.
Or the parents, maybe. Carpooling. Carpooling. If they're seventeen athletes, student athletes. Okay.
Just says depart at eleven-thirty. It doesn't say whether it's a bus or car.
Okay.
Thank you.
All set. So this is a vote, all in favor? unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck.
Now, I'd like to invite to the table our ELE Coordinator, Alyssa Buchanan, and our Special Education Coordinator, Tracy Grandow, and as I said, Janet Sheen had to excuse herself from tonight's meeting, she was part of this team. Very briefly, the Department of Education visits public school districts every six years. Tracy has cutting-edge data that they're going to change the program and come every three years, starting, starting now. But this coordinated program review, I call it an excellent audit of the system. There's a tremendous amount of pre-work that goes into this audit. These are experienced auditors from DUCY that go into school districts, and they, they look at everything from, I'll tell you, and I will let them do the presentation. They'll say, we want to see the ed plan of a third grader who has OT and speech and has been in the district for two years. That's the level of detail. And so, and in the civil rights, they'll share with you the number of areas that they go over, our records, our publications. And in ELE, Alyssa Buchanan deserves, as does Tracy, a tremendous amount of credit. They head up these programs, and you do wonderful work on behalf of the children and the families. So I'm going to turn it over to you, and you have a PowerPoint in your packet. So welcome, Tracy and Alyssa.
Thank you. So this process actually started during the 2015-16 school year, in the second half of that year. And we were very busy uploading all types of documents to the DUCY website. This is all done through a web-based monitoring system. We uploaded documents such as a file review of IEPs, documents from ELE, civil rights documents, and school committee policy. So this is actually over a year-long process. So this is, the coordinated program review is just one of the many ways in which the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education monitors school districts and charter schools. And they, the coordinated program review is in three specific areas: special education, civil rights, and English learner education. The coordinated program review is held every six years. However, with us starting in the year 2019, 2020, it will be held every three years. And that will be for every school district, charter school, and public school across the state. So our next review will actually be three years from now. They have changed the process. The district conducts a self-assessment in the areas of special education. They also conduct a self-assessment in civil rights and English learner education. And the big PCG report that we had done was all part of this as well and plays into this. So we also have onsite verification. We uploaded our documents last year during the second half of the year. Individuals from DUCY reviewed all of those documents from, actually Program Quality Assurance. Then they asked us to submit more documents via files or also documents from school committee. And then they came out onsite in November and spent two days reviewing everything that we submitted that was extra that they asked us. They also came out in December for three days and visited all six schools and interviewed staffs and parents and community members. So our record review consisted of over thirty-four special education files, eight ELE files, interviews with twelve administrators and numerous staff. And by staff, I mean service providers such as speech OT, general education teachers, adjustment counselors. And they basically give you a specific list of who they want to see. Parent interviews, they also sent out parent surveys, and parents actually called them as well. And they have a specific scripted list of questions to ask all parents. They observed all twelve, all six schools. They went into classrooms. They had free reign of every single building in this district. And they reviewed documents such as handbooks, school committee documents, the online special education manual, ELE documents, basically anything they asked for, we provided. Yes?
They asked you for the thirty-four student records that was there by their request, that, that, those particular numbers, right? Was it, was it based on a percentage?
That's a good question. So what they will do is initially, last year, they asked for, for example, give them a file of a student with an emotional disability, or give them a file of a student that has an initial evaluation. So they specify what file, what type of file they want. However, they then selected files based on their review of that initial upload last year. They then selected names and said, give us the files of these particular students.
Okay. Thank you.
After all the uploading, the onsite visit in November and the onsite visit in December, we had an exit interview on their very last day in December. In the exit interview, it was just brief, and it said, you know, some of the things we did very well and what the next steps would be. We got a draft on March second, and we recently received our final report. And we want to report on those findings tonight. The final report has several different ratings, and I'm going to mention that this may change in the next three-year process, but for this process, our ratings are commendable, implemented, partially implemented, implementation in progress, not implemented, and not applicable. They, the report that you received consists of our findings in all the areas and also steps for our corrective action plan, which we will take, we will discuss tonight. So in terms of special education, there are two basic legal areas that they look at. They look at the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDAA, of 2004. They also look at the Massachusetts regulations. So for special education, those are the two areas that they look at. And there are actually fifty-six different areas that they review. And this is just a sampling of what they review in terms of topics. So they will review everything from assessments, timelines, they want to look at your staffing ratios, they want to look at how you deal with behavioral issues, assistive technology. So you can see, it's quite a range, and it's over the course of fifty-six different areas. In terms of the coordinated program review findings, the Milton Public School Special Education Department fully implemented all sixty criteria.
Wow.
Thus, we do not have any corrective action plan in this area.
And I, I, in my experience, I've never seen that in any area, being involved in these over the years. And so Tracy took this on, she lived it, and I would also say to the school committee who interviewed firms, that legally, we have to evaluate our special ed program on a cycle. And the PCG report that we talk about, that presented to you, assisted us the year before this visit. But the work that Tracy did, she was a taskmaster for the entire district over all six schools, and to have these individuals living in the district and all these records, and you collaborated with the CPAC, they were involved in every step of the way in this study.
And I would like to give credit to an amazing district, staff, students, and parents, because that would not be possible. So that's special education. Moving on to civil rights. In the area of civil rights, they consider a bunch of different documents, everything from Title IX, Title VI, which is basically equal access documents. So equal access to programs, equal access to everything from counseling to jobs, but it's, it's a lot more than, for example, special education. Americans with Disabilities Act, they look at all of our policies, our job descriptions, whether students have access to classes, whether it's equitable. So there are several different documents, and these are just some of them that are listed. We all, they also look at the Massachusetts regulations and the student learning time. They go over in terms of how many hours our students are learning, what our school year is like, when we end, when's our graduation date, and other requirements of the state such as our bullying, anti-bullying policies. So they just ask for just a wide range of documents, as you can see.
This school committee knows, because they helped us update every policy.
So we implemented twenty-three out of twenty-eight requirements, which is very good. And only five criteria were partially implemented, but it was really minute portions of that. So I'm going to go over that right now. So the first was in terms of homelessness. There were policies, it was just a couple of policies in which the word homelessness was left off of that policy. The second was translations of documents. We translate major documents, but we need to translate every announcement that goes out. We've since been working on this issue. The other thing was non-discrimination policy statement, including protected categories. And the notice for students age sixteen, you have to, when you send the letter home for students that want to leave school at age sixteen, you have to include a clause that says that their right to appeal is extended, the right to have an exit interview is extended. And lastly, employment practices, this was similar to the, the word homelessness missing, and then in a few items, gender identity was missing. But if you look on our website, all of these categories are now included in everything that we communicate to the public in writing and also through our media.
Ms. Verella.
Yes?
I have a quick question on the announcement of events that should be translated into the major languages spoken by the residents with limited English skills. So how is that assessed, is that assessed by the district of how many, you know, I, I would think that, I know we have like a large Haitians population that would, you know, but how, how do you track, you know, how many other languages are spoken by percentage that would require us to, how many languages?
So we have to translate everything in what the particular language the child or parent speaks. And how we track that is, when people register, when parents register their children for the district, we have a packet that they fill out, our registration packet, that lists the languages. And so we have to have everything translated for every parent.
And I think Ms. Buchanan later in the presentation is going to detail to Ms. Verella, remember Verella's question more?
There is also a document within the, the registration packet, which is called the Home Language Survey. And on the Home Language Survey itself, it, it asks parents if they need translations of documents or if they need interpreters. So we keep track of that, but also the DART tool tells us a profile of our district and what the major languages are of our district. So sometimes they aren't just students receiving English language support, they're also students in the general education population. in the general education population who are bilingual or trilingual.
Not to belabor this point, but, oh, I'm sorry. But if they're having to fill out these forms at the beginning when they register, are those forms translated for them?
So the Home Language Survey is translated, and it was translated by the Department of Education. So we have those. And we do have the registration packets for the, the most predominantly spoken languages in our district.
Which are?
Which are Mandarin, Haitian, Creole, Vietnamese, and no, no, not Spanish yet.
And I have to give Alyssa Buchanan credit. Alyssa is integral when every family registers. She's part of the process. And she's right there taking that survey and following up. And I know the school committee understands, but for the viewing public, when a family identifies that English isn't spoken at home, Alyssa immediately administers testing for the child. But she's going to deal with that later in your presentation?
Sure.
Any other questions?
Before we move away from the screen, Tracy, did I hear you correctly that the first and the last, at least, of these partially implemented findings have been corrected already? Is that what you said?
Yes.
All five of the, all of them, except, I wouldn't say that the announcements are completely, but the other four?
Other four.
Remember Craig? Have all been corrected.
Okay, great.
So, in this corrective action, we're now by May 11th. We have to submit a plan over the next X number of months. Some people might have nineteen, I call them tics. Nineteen tics. And so, how are you going to correct? How are you going to do the work? And so, when we do the corrective action, I'd say four of those are already done.
So as you can see, we've already been working on all of them, except for the announcements, everything has been corrected. So that will become part of our plan that you upload to the web-based system. So we've already included the words homelessness in the literature that we send out and also on our website. We've already, we've actually started working on the announcements piece in terms of documentation, translations. We've included the word gender identity in, in our literature that we send out and on social media. We've already revised the letter for these students at age sixteen and over. And in the employment, it was a job description, we've already included homelessness in that as well, gender identity too. So, so that, they have been corrected.
Remember ever heard?
So I know that the translation piece is, is a challenge for, for everyone. I mean, even in our small preschool where I work, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a criteria, it's a accreditation criteria, and it's a challenge. So is there any way to pool, like, pool resources with other districts and, and other places though that you can, like, use translators to help translate the documents? And I don't know if you've considered that or not, if that's even a possibility.
So even the community parents, we do that at the preschool, like, we have help that way.
We've done a couple of things so far to address that. We've used Google translations, I believe, on our website, we have Google translation now. We are also going to be translating our major documents and our announcements using people in the community and departments that we know. I know with special education, we have a bunch of interpreters that can translate or have to do testing. And we also can do that through our program, the software program that we use. So there are a variety of ways that we can fix this. And we've really been working on that.
I know, it's, it's a lot of work. I commend your work on that.
And I have to say, in this particular district, as would be Boston, with so many world language teachers, we, before the Google option, our world language staff, they were never satisfied with the translation because there were errors in it. And so, they insisted, until recently, doing everything by hand. You can see the world language director agreeing with me in the back. And so, we almost have a schedule of, but it, to the letter of the law, it would be my weekly blast translated.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the principals' daily memos.
Correct.
Alyssa?
For the families who have indicated on the, pardon me, for the families who have indicated on the Home Language Survey that they need translations of documents, those would be families that we would need to provide the translations for. And then if, there are some times when parents only ask for an interpreter and not for translations of documents because they're familiar with the English language. And usually, what has a tendency to occur in our, in our meetings, is the meetings are very quick and fast, and so it's nice to have a person clarifying in our native language, some jargon that we might not be familiar with.
Any other questions on, to so far with the corrective action that we've taken for civil rights? So I'm going to turn it over to Alyssa Buchanan for ELE.
So our ELE is, was assessed on fifteen criteria. And our state laws that govern ELE are 71A and CMR 603, No Child Left Behind, and our title, Civil Rights. General law, 71A, was voted into, in 2001, and that was by the voters of Massachusetts. So that's been in existence for quite some time. And this is the second time that I've been a part of a CPR in Milton. So in our, of our fifteen indicators, two were partially implemented and one, one indicator was not implemented. So the partially implemented was the district should assess the English proficiency of one hundred percent of the learners. So we have students who take an English proficiency test, much like MCAS. It's called Access for ELLs, and it is aligned to the WIDA standards. In 2004, we started, no, 2014, excuse me, we began administering this test to students. It assesses students in all four domains of language, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And for, since our inception, we've had one hundred percent participation, except, with the exception for last year when we had a clerical error, and there were two students who were former English, limited English proficient students, who were not in our program any longer, but were indicated as participating in our program, so it affected our participation rate. We've made changes to the way in which we gather the data for SIMs, and we have double-checking mechanisms now to make sure that going forward, we will not have that same, that same problem. Still there? Nope. So our second area that we were partially implemented was to increase the amount of ESL instruction to ensure that English learners make adequate progress. In the past, we've had enough staffing for our students, and our population has grown over the years. When I started here in Milton, six years ago, there were forty-six students. Now in Milton, there are ninety-five students. And there are varying proficiency levels, and depending upon a student's proficiency level, we're required to provide them a nu, a number of service based on their proficiency, their English language proficiency. That's determined by a screener that is called the WPT, and that is directly aligned to the access exam that we give the students. And it determines what their level of proficiency is so that we can place them for support. And also, the WIDA access scores also give us the information to provide adequate support services for students at varying proficiency levels. We need to do a review of a curriculum for its program effectiveness. We, because our, our program has grown considerably, we need to update our curriculum and also meet different demands and newer standards, as well as, we need additional materials. When the curriculum was first purchased, it was purchased for a smaller amount of students, and now the materials that we have aren't necessarily adequate for the population that we have and we service now. And that's where the, the implementation of a curriculum with fidelity comes in because we have, due to a rapid pace in which we're acquiring new students, we have not been able to keep up with the demands of our students. And that's a good thing because we're, we have four teachers in our department who are trained, who have been doing the best we can with the resources that we have. But going forward, we don't have the adequate support that our students need based on the law.
Ms. Varela.
So just so, remind me how, because I read that part about the curriculum in the, in the report that you sent, which I found interesting. And how, how are we going to address that moving forward with the curriculum and the materials that we need to purchase?
In our non-contingent budget, you recall we have a point four staff member to increase our ELL staff.
Right, thank you.
And these fund, the fundings, just like the special education fundings, text materials and supplies, all come out of the budget line. And so, identified this, and when we refer to the PCG, we have to now look at next year, a similar PCG study of our ELE program. So when we tell you that we have to submit by May 11th, we have to come up with a plan of how we're going to research, who we're going to interview, and how we're going to bring a firm in to, Alyssa, correct, evaluate our ELE program.
I'll talk about that right here.
Oh, excuse me.
Just to speak to the staffing, we had, at the beginning of the school year, we knew that we, we were unable to meet the requirements, and we were in communication about that. A memo was written to Superintendent Gormley, and that's why we have a point four position in the budget for this year.
But this is very much like special education. And so, just like we've educated the public about ed plans that are being written every single day, somebody's moving in tomorrow and there's not an ELE teacher in the district who has time. Some of them are, so we're at a breaking point that some of the children require one-to-one instruction, but some can be small group. So Alyssa and her other three teachers, we actually sit down and say, you know, maybe, maybe three times a year, are you most effectively using, should we move somebody to another school? Has somebody tested, what's the word, flipped?
Flipped, well, it's really because the, if you don't mind me adding to you, sometimes our student population is transient, so sometimes we'll have a student move out so that we can shuffle staff based on proficiency levels of students. So we do communicate about the needs of the district and how we might be able to be creative with staffing.
Ms. White, did you have something?
I was just going to ask you about the ninety-five students, are they scattered among middle school, high school, and elementary, or are they predominantly in elementary?
They're in all six schools.
Okay. And so does that mean the instruction is very different for an older child learning English versus a youngster learning English?
Yes. Because, also because this, the demands of the content at different levels. For example, at the high school, students may come in at eleventh grade and they need to be able to take MCAS, and they need to pass exams, they need to be able to get into college. So we work on, you know, working with the students to be able to take the TOEFL exam. We have strategies that we use that are different based on their, their developmental levels, the content that they need to get through in a year, the curriculum. And we also provide a lot of family support too, not only to the child, but the families to make sure that they're able to really interact with our school system.
If I might add one thing to Ms. White's question, six years ago, the auditor said, perhaps you want to think about in Milton, assigning all the ELE children to one school, maximizing your staff. And so, sort of like if we have a SPEED program, we put it in one school. But when families come in, they identify with neighborhoods. And so in special education, we do that because we have so many programs and to maximize our funds. But with the ELE, you know, it's been difficult, to Ms. White's point, there might be children, there might be only one second grader at, at the Collicot, you know, if they could be grouped with the children at the Tucker, but we haven't done that. We haven't asked people, again, we work around class size, but with these children, we haven't, we haven't, to that point, asked all the children to go to one school. We have tried to respect the home schools, these families move into a neighborhood, and it's even more important for these families to identify with the neighborhood and their neighbors. And so Alyssa's worked hard, really maximizing the staff and to the point, the text materials and supplies line.
Dr. Craig.
In the non-contingent budget, we added what we needed to, required by law. But could you speak to, as frankly as you feel comfortably doing, comfortable doing, could you speak to what you think you need? I mean, this population has doubled, right? So, how long have you had four of you doing this, with what level, what number of students, and how much is less than a half-time position going to help? If you could talk about some of that.
Okay. So, I started six years ago, and I was part of the team that prepared the documents and started the program, in essence. And so, at the time, we had, there were three people working in the district, and they were over six schools. And the population was a lot smaller, and it just happened that the needs of the students, they weren't as great as the needs that we're seeing now. So we have lots of shuffling that's happening in the world, and there's lots of family relocation going on. And so with that, we're getting more and more students who don't have a background with English, who have not spoken the language before. And so that requires, like you said, a lot more time and, you know, teacher support. So with students who come in, that would be a level one, and that student requires two-point-five hours of support per day. Now, when I see the need, if there was, if there were unlimited funds, I see a real need at the high school to be able to provide more service and support to classroom, to content area teachers, to assist teachers with modifying their curriculum, understanding the needs of ELL students, also having additional time for the ELL person at the high school because students are unfamiliar, even though we have adjustment counselors, and we're trying to get students into college, and our, our ELL students are becoming very successful. And they're doing that because of the, not only the ELE people, there's lots of support, but a lot of times, the ELL teachers are taking time in the mornings, afternoons, they're sitting down with families, they're explaining the college process, they're going through financial aid documents with them, they're telling them about the whole process of what happens, they're bringing them on visits, they're, you know, they're going above and beyond. And that doesn't happen just at the high school, it happens at each level because our families really need, it's not a hand-holding process at all. It's a, it's a, it's a support so that our students can be successful. And sometimes our teachers need a little bit more wiggle room because they're traveling to another, another school. So they don't have time to effectively communicate with colleagues or, so if there was, you know, if there were unlimited funds, that would be what I would say.
Ms. Buchanan, will you explain to the viewing public and the school committee how the law has changed in every teacher who works in Massachusetts? Would you explain now the new requirement?
Sure. So, since the inception of the program, there has been a requirement of each teacher, of each content area teacher, to gain a, it's not a formal certification, it is a certificate that's attached to their license. And it's called the SEI endorsement. And the endorsement is a sixty-five hour course, if you take the full course, which is now the only course that's available. In the past, there were some teachers who took category training, I'm not sure if some of you are familiar with this, but this was to give teachers background into how to support and design instruction for ELL students. and design instruction for ELL students. And so teachers who had participated in that particular professional development were allowed to take a shorter SEI endorsement course. But so, in essence, over three years, we provided DESI-sponsored courses for our teachers. So we set up, we recruited the instructors who had certification, we provided the space, we supported the teachers through the process. The four teachers in the ELL depart, ELE department, we were, in essence, bombarded by teachers because they needed backgrounds, they needed to know students, they needed specific information to be able to complete their projects for their courses. Not only were teachers asked to receive this certification if they had an ELL student in their class, administrators were required, and are required, to gain the SEI endorsement as an administrator if they are evaluating teachers who have ELL students in their class. We, because of a good relationship with DESI, we were able to get, we were only supposed to have a certain amount of courses, but because of our relationship with DESI, they gave us two additional courses at no charge. So we were able to gain more educators, we were able to provide this, this background to these educators in Milton.
So all the classroom teachers can't get recertified unless they take this 65 hours?
Yeah.
It's a lot. We also have an in-house trainer who is at the middle school, and she has the certification to be able to deliver this course. We also have one of the teachers in our ELE department who also has that qualification.
So, and, and just to clarify, so it's a statewide mandate so that every teacher who teaches in public school in Massachusetts, who has an ELL learner, it's not ELL?
It's everyone, right?
It's every, it's everyone. I mean, it's, well, that's what I'm saying, it's everyone, I mean, it can be art teachers, gym teachers, everyone has to take it.
It's core academic teachers.
Just core academic?
Not a gym teacher or a music teacher, but it would be special educators, preschool teachers, content area teachers.
English, math.
Okay, all right, okay.
And depending upon the level of your license, there is a tiny bit of wiggle room in terms of gaining that certification or that endorsement, but if you have an ELL student, you have one academic year in which to gain that endorsement.
Ms. Rosemar.
I have just a question, I'm just learning about this program, wondering, how are these four people in your department deployed across the school district? Are they based in one location, or they based out at different schools? And you've got four people in six schools, so, I'm just, if you could talk about that a little bit.
So each of us has a home school and a principal that we directly work with, so we attend the staff meetings for that particular school. But depending upon, the teacher at Tucker is only located at Tucker because of the student need, and then the high school teacher works over at Colicott and Cunningham with me. I have Colicott and Cunningham, and the middle school teacher, she has middle school and So the area, do you want, do you have any other questions? I'm sorry.
No.
The other area that I want to bring your attention to, though, is the, that was the next slide, actually. Oh, back. This one was the one that was not implemented, and I think you should know why. We, we conduct evaluations of our program, but we call them reports. And so I've reported to the school committee last year, I reported to the leadership team, and the format in which I reported the information has changed, and it's become a 20-page evaluation that needs to be done every two years. So that's why we, you'll see this particular area as not implemented because the format in which we were doing our reporting has changed, so we will now use the format in which DESI has asked us to use. And they, they called me and asked me, they said, should we be writing in this in the report since, you know, you do, you do report to your school committee? And I said, well, just in all honesty, we don't use the format that you've asked us to use, but this is what we do. And she said, we really need you to use their particular format. So that's what we'll do going forward. So, I spoke about how we're, we will ensure our data accuracy going forward so that our students, we can have a 100% participation rate and access. Going forward, we'll have increased staffing to ensure that our students at least reach the recommended daily service guidelines. Over the next year, we will have to, on May 11th, I'll have to submit our plan as to how we'll go about the next school year documenting and working as a team on our curriculum, and as well as our, how we link our curriculum to the overall Milton Public School curriculum. And we'll work on a new formal evaluation of our ELE program. So they want us to do it a little different. So in the past, we've had leadership staff, and we've had the school committee, and we've talked about it in our ELE department, but for this formal evaluation, they'd like us to gather adjustment counselors, classroom teachers, ELE staff, leaders of schools, leaders, central office leadership, to evaluate the, the data that we, that we collect, and then report on it together and make collective decisions based on the data that we review. So we'll begin that process as soon as we submit our corrective action plan.
Ms. Veron.
So I just had a really quick question. I just want to commend you on all your work. I, you know, I work with a lot of young children, so they're preschoolers who are English-language learners, and there's just nothing more rewarding than working with the families and the children and seeing that blossom and develop for them. So two questions. This seems to be an area where the actual classroom teacher needs a lot of support and, you know, additional training to deal with the number of students they might be dealing with, and I just wanted you to briefly address that, either you and Superintendent Gormly, about, you know, what opportunities there are for them, because it really is probably, their daily work, day in and day out with them, is what's going to build their proficiency, in addition to the scaffolding that you're providing, your team is providing.
Yes. So in the past, we have offered specific professional development towards the WIDA standards, modifying curriculum, supporting English-language learners, strategies for success, and we've also provided the SEI endorsement course here locally. And going forward, we definitely need to provide additional trainings for, to maintain, you know, engagement with ELL students and families.
So, I saw your faces with just four teachers in the district, Tracy and Alyssa, very skilled administrators and educators, as are each of the individuals in this ELE department. And they make themselves accessible to classroom teachers, but the work is continual, and because of registrations, the work is daily. And so there is a tremendous amount to do. But it's a very vibrant part, and it, it's a very exciting part of the district.
We also created something that we call ELE Student Profiles, or Student Success Profiles, that we, that we submit to teachers at the beginning of the school year, much like team chairs prepare, you know, reports and bring the IEPs or 504s to teachers and specific information about student learning. We do the same in our department, but we were, we provide, because we're with families for multiple years, many of my students I've had for two years, three years, I have even more background and information on students and families, like ways to contact families that might be not on a list that we have actively in school that parents have shared with me, but they do not want to have in the school database. There might be family members who they'd like us to contact, maybe a sister who lives in town, or that, so we have a lot of information about families that we pass on, like this is a good person to call, and the family who's supportive, and we'll bring the child to community events if the parents are working. We also have background on just students, student information, like we give them in these profiles, their, how they learn best. They really need graphic organizers. This is, these are the sports that we've put in place that we've seen are really drive the student performance, as well as their reports on access. We'll give historical reports so that the teachers can look back, and we sit down with teachers, and we explain what that data means, and how we use it, and how we'll teach all four domains of learning for an English learner.
Tremendous work.
Yeah. Thank you. So, the question is, I'm trying to get this, where do we go from here? So, right now, we have our corrective action plan is due May 11th. When you get your final report, you have 20 days to correct everything. And so we have, this, I want to say that this is a very good report, a final report. We were overjoyed with this final report, especially considering the laws and regulations are forever changing, and as recently as within the past year, they've added different criteria, so we just keep adding to what we are supposed to upload and do. So considering all the regulations and the regulations that change, this is an amazing report. So our next steps is, are going to be, by May 11th, we will have to upload forms to DESI. We've done most of the work already in terms of our corrective action plan, and we've carefully thought about how we've going to fix things and fix them. So most of the work is already done for us. We have a full year to comply with that, and then in three years, we will repeat the process all over again. We may not have as many indicators, but in three years, we'll be back at doing this, and we'll be continuously looking at all these aspects as we go along up into those three years. Any final questions?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you do a tremendous, you do, both do a tremendous job, and you, reports like this only add to your sterling reputation in the district. Thank you for all your, your day-to-day hard work, but coordinating a review like this, and, you know, Mary, you said it was busy in the central office, and that's, that's quite the understatement.
Thank you.
This last fall.
And I've sat at the table with more ticks. And it's a good, it's a, I call it an audit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So very briefly, for happenings, first I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Dr. Glenn Pavlicek to address a report we have on lead screening, our kindergarten and first grade update in response to a letter to the editor of the Milton Times. Dr. Pavlicek?
All right. First, the, people noticed this morning in the Globe, an article about lead screening across, lead and copper screening in water across the state. Bill Ritchie, our Director of Consolidated Facilities, does this on a constant basis. We took samples from every water fountain and every kitchen sink in the district, and not surprisingly for buildings that are only 15 years old, there was, you know, no measurable amounts of lead in them because we took all the lead pipes out. The places you're likely to find lead are generally residue from street pipes, but in, in all of the cases that we had, the, the amount of trace elements of lead in the water was less than 1% of the allowable amount. So it was, it's very, very clean water, so that...
So that article is in your green folder.
So that, that was good. Screenings, kindergarten screening, people had until last Friday to do the initial registration for kindergarten for next year. Based on the numbers, we will once again have 16 kindergartens next year. This was the first time we have ever had that many kindergarten classes, so next year will be the second. There will be four kindergartens at the Colicott, the Cunningham, there will be five at the Glover, and three at the Tucker, because that's where we have the classrooms. That causes a little bit of a problem because the students are not exactly divided that way across town. So what we have done is we found that there are more students who are living in the Cunningham and Colicott districts together than we have seats at the Cunningham and Colicott in kindergarten. And so we have sent out a, an email to parents of incoming kindergarteners to see if any of them would be interested in moving to the Glover or Tucker districts. We have, the geography of the town is, we have a number of people who are in the Cunningham district who frankly can see Glover from their front porch, and we were hoping that many of them would be interested in going to the Glover School. And so the email went out yesterday, and we've got eight or nine volunteers already. So, this is a situation that should fairly well rectify itself and take care of that kind of overcrowding. We still will have a little bit of an issue in that the Cunningham and Colicott, although they both have four kindergartens, again, the students aren't exactly divided there, we have more children in the Colicott district than we have seats in the Colicott School at the moment, kindergarten. So if those, if we don't have enough people from Colicott who'd opt to move to Glover, which is less likely, obviously, than people from Cunningham, we may be sending out a second round of emails asking some of the people who live in the Colicott district if they'd like to move down the hall and go into the Cunningham School. So, we're, there'll be a little bit of shuffling going around, trying to get the, the classes balanced, because we don't want to go above 23 students in the kindergarten class, it's too high, you know, to go beyond that. So, they'll, it will play itself out for the next couple of weeks, likely. We're, we're planning on sending out letters, hopefully next week, but it's going to take a little time to, to sort out a couple of these issues with school placement. So, kindergarten is underway, but it's a, it's a, it's a challenge.
And, again, I had, take every opportunity to say that there are school districts where the kindergartens or the first grades in one school are 18, and across town, they might be 29. So you have to give Milton Public School parents credit. They understand class size, they understand the power of class size. And Dr. Pavlicek and Lori Dunn, I think Glenn knows the name of every one of the 340 incoming kindergarten, is if their parents or guardians ever mentioned perhaps wanting to go to another school. And so our goal is to equalize the class sizes, then the family stays, some of the families request to go and would, could they bring an older sibling? We then look at the class size, and it's on a case-to-case basis. This solution this year is going to be very valuable for the Glover, because the Glover parents and staff have always wanted, potentially, it could be three English, which would increase the number of role models for the Cotot at the Glover. So this year, with the response that we've received in the last 24 hours, this is working out that it will really optimize class size across the district.
Excellent. Ms. Veron.
I, I was wondering if you could speak to, so, you know, we're at 16, which is good, so we don't have to move anybody out of any other classes, but on recent legacy past, with regard to now, until the end of August, I mean, I know anything can happen, but ballparking it, how many more additional families do you have move in over the summer? Like, what if you have 10 new kindergarteners between now and then, or 12? What's going to happen?
We, we'll be able to handle that number because we were really on the cusp of 15 and 16. If I really squeezed, we could probably get everyone who's here today in 15 classes with like two seats left over.
And that's what he wanted to do.
But, but we're not, it's not going to work, because there are going to be more than two people in the summer.
Yeah.
So we have a little play with the 16th class. I don't, I don't think there'll be an issue with not being able to accommodate children in 16 classes. The worry is, again, I've always said, we're built for 14, we can, we can rotate a 15th class every year. 16 puts a strain on us. 16, two years in a row, pretty well maxes us out in classrooms. I'm not sure what 16 for three years in a row will do to us. We may be losing computer labs or something like that, because we physically don't have the classrooms as those roll forward.
Because those 16 are moving up to first grade.
Moving up, yeah. You'll be, next year, we'll be rolling off 15, fifth grades, and if we roll on 16 kindergartens, we need another room somewhere.
So to remember Sheila Verola's point, at first, Glenn, we had a different configuration that was going to take care of... that was going to take care of everyone, but it left us no growth. So, this is going to be really optimum for class size and children.
And first grade, as I think we've mentioned before, we are in the lottery process for, for French immersion. We have a couple of seats available at the Collicott School and we are working through the, the waiting list of people from other schools who didn't get French in their school, see if they're willing to relocate to the, the Collicott while staying on the waiting list for their home school. And we've just started working down that list now. We've made the first three offers and we're, and we will roll down the list, see where we are with that. Historically, there's been enough motion in the summer that we're, we're hopeful that we'll get through, at least being able to offer everybody the option, if not in their home school somewhere by the end of the summer. But this is, this is going to run throughout the entire summer. There's no question about it. This, like registration, will just keep going. This is, becomes a, an everyday meeting at this point to say, where are we now? What are we, any changes? I mean, we had two children move out of district today, you know, and we had a child enrolled yesterday. So, into existing classes, not even for next year. So, it, it just happens. It's a, it's a mobile population.
One more question and a, and a comment. So, my question is, Mary, when you said with, with some, with some of the shuffling that they can do, so, is it, is it the goal to have three English at Glover next year and one French or three English and two French?
There's no, it's based on parent choice.
Right.
And so, if you're watching the pattern, the pattern in the last, Glenn, two or three years, but it's really, you know, at the Cunningham, there's going to be, parents wanted, what was the choice? Two English?
This year was three English and one French.
And so, but, and parents called us and said, why aren't you just doing two English and two French? Well, we've all had part in authoring the plan. It's driven by the parent choice.
Right.
Now, would that be optimum at the Glover, increasing the number of role models for the COTAT? But it's really based, but again, we've never been able to set it up before, Sheila, that even that possibility existed.
Right. And then, my other just comment is, again, for the viewing population is, again, I just want to bring awareness to the fact that population is continuing to increase. We spoke about this earlier with our NASDAQ report, but, but enrollment is an issue that we are going to have to address and we go, you know, this upcoming year, I know we're going to do more evaluation and research in it, but we can't, as I always say, we can't say we'll educate these, these two children and then there's no room for these two children. And so, and we can't tell people not to, you know, move in and have children, right? So, but it's, it's an issue that I just want people to be aware of that, I know we have six, I still call them brand-new schools even though some of them, as Glenn just said, are 15 years old, but it is what it is. People are having more children. We're a popular town. People are moving in and as a town, we're going to have to address this issue and work together so that we can accommodate enough space to educate all these children.
Oh, and the, the, the letter to the editor of two weeks ago in the Times, we're also addressing this at town meeting tomorrow night in our presentation, but a citizen wrote in questioning the, the average teacher salary in Milton, saying that they had seen on the DESI website that it was $98,000 and was concerned about that, as were we when we saw the letter. Because for fiscal year 16, if, if you had a doctorate and had been in the district for 30 years, you could only make, what, $99,000? And it's an interesting mathematical problem on my end to figure out how the average could be 98, especially since I think we had one person who satisfied that criteria. It turns out that the, the person was looking at a web, a spreadsheet on the DESI website, which in fact was an error. It showed the right total salary, but instead of showing 290 teachers, it showed 240 teachers and therefore, when you divided it, it was an erroneous answer. So, we've spent some time with Department of Education, giving them, again, the data, going through it, walking through it, seeing where they got that number and correcting it. And so, the website will be corrected at the next update, which is later this month. But the actual teacher salary was much more in line with what it should have been. It had jumped from, it had been running 78,000, 79,000, 80,000 and jumped to 98. Well, not surprisingly, the next step could have been 81, which is about where it was. Average teacher salary is a difficult thing to deal with anyway because if you have more senior teachers, it drives the salary up. It's not a, a good measure. When we have been doing our demographics and our salary comparisons over the last few years, we have chosen particular ranges. Say, a new teacher who's coming with a master's degree in M1, how does that compare with our comparable communities? A, a veteran teacher who has a master's degree and 10 years of experience, how does that salary compare with neighboring communities? So, we pick a, a level and compare because that gives a better benchmark. You're comparing apples to apples. In another district which may have a much higher percentage of newer teachers, the average salary comparison, it doesn't tell really the true story. So, that's in the process of being corrected. We have the right data and we have, and we've included it in tomorrow night's presentation.
And we also sent a correction to the Milton Times. In my email blast, I included it and all the principals will include it in their blast and a school committee member asked about Milton's and we submitted it there. Briefly, I'd like to announce tonight, our athletic director, Eric Cajo, who's only been with us a year, is going to retire from education and move back to where he and his family came from in upstate New York. We'll be posting that position, setting up screening committees and involving the school committee every step of the way and I'll give public updates. Another resignation that we have, good for this individual, not so good for us, our Dr. Angela Burke, our technology director, has been appointed the Assistant Superintendent of the Randolph Public Schools. So, that's bittersweet, happy for her and she'll be a loss and we wish her well and an excellent hire on the, on our neighbor's pot. Briefly, this last week and this coming week, a teacher appreciation week. We had a little confusion, different sites, but as I wrote in my email blast, take two weeks to recognize a teacher. Friday, if your child has a favorite lunch lady or gentleman, Friday is Cool Lunch Hero Day. All of our cafeteria workers, compliments of Jackie Morgan, will have apparel on and there'll be quite going on in the cafeterias of the Milton Public Schools on Friday. Make sure your children buy.
So, they, where can I get these?
That's all we do in our house.
You have to be at luncheon place, but I could give you one.
Oh, I see.
I could give you mine. Saturday, May 6th, so there's no confusion as I was confused. It's National Nurses Day. We have phenomenal nurses in each of our schools. A little secret, the nominations are in to the MFE for the Teacher of the Year, more nominations than ever before. As we speak, they're, the MFE meets independently. I always say it's not Mary Gormley's favorite teacher. They take the nominations, one teacher per school and a Dr. Mary Grasser O'Neil Leadership Award. A little secret, they'll be making surprise visits to classrooms on the 12th of May and then the evening presentation for the Teacher of the Year is May 24th. I'll make sure these dates, Jim and Donahue asked us to every week, give you updated list of all the events that you can attend. Also, on the 12th, Ms. Verella and Ms. Eberhart will tell you that's another important night in the Milton Public Schools, our junior, senior prom. Is that on, is on that night and at your next meeting, for the meeting will be the open hearing on school choice. We'll do publications on that.
Excellent. Good.
And if I might, just in closing, every two weeks, we're in the midst of this, we have a meeting of 20 individuals. We've grown from Betty White knows, a small summer school program. If you would indulge me, this is what's happening in the Milton Public Schools this summer. Our phenomenal summer at the high school, there's an extended schooling year program for children with special needs. Our summer, Milton Summer Enrichment, here at Milton High School, I sent you an email in the first hour and a half. What did it read? I think 300 children. The Tucker Scholars Program is a Title I program where children can go at no charge, is housed here at the high school. That will be running. High school academic courses for those students who may not have experienced success in one of those course subjects, they will be here this summer. We have a grade eight to nine program identifying students at risk. They come to Milton High School all summer. It's called the Bridge Program and correlated to building up their success will be here. We've followed and we'll do a presentation for all members. We're involved in the calculus project, pre-teaching calculus to rising eighth graders, staying with them through grade till they take their calculus at 11th or 12th grade. We're now into 120 high schoolers. We'll be here this summer being pre-taught their math class. Driver's Education will also be available. At the middle school, there'll be two weeks where you can go, welcome to middle school, two different options. At the Collicott Cunningham, Pam Dossi's eight-week program for Kim Cunningham only has two weeks left of openings. Six of her eight weeks are already filled for children that go seven in the morning till six at night, field trips and programs. We also run a, another extended year specialized program at the Collicott Cunningham. At the Tucker School, last year, we piloted because of Bernadette Moonen, a national program camp invention. 100 children went from nine to three. We're running it again. We have an extra 120 students who want it. We're going to run two weeks of camp invention at the Tucker School this summer.
That's it?
No rest. When are they going to actually?
When are they actually going to go to the beach?
So, I said, I said to the team yesterday, I'd like to share with the school committee and the viewing public. It really takes your breath away and Betty has been involved, the number of programs and options in the Milton Public Schools this summer for our residents, children.
And sub, we're in there, we're going to clean the buildings.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. So, under the Chair's Report, FY18 Budget Update, we continue to be in the holding pattern with, with town meeting. My expectation, hope, prayer, is that we'll get through our budget tomorrow evening at town meeting, both the contingent and non-contingent budget and move forward from there. Expect our soon-to-be reconstituted finance subcommittee to do some work on the budget background in the next couple of weeks. So, hopefully at our next meeting, we'll, we'll have a, a bit more comprehensive picture of what the budget's going to look like for next year. Subcommittee's, so, I, I asked and thank you all for your timely response in terms of your interest in the subcommittees. Before you, you have your requests. I was able to accommodate everybody's requests. The only change I'm going to make, Member Rosemarin, Dr. Pavlicek informed me that the five-year financial plan committee is typically the purview of himself and the town accountant. We simply reap the, reap the benefits of their hard work. So, I'm, I'm going to strike you from there. And that leaves everything filled except for the Town Capital Improvement Planning Committee, the Payroll Warrant, the Milton Foundation for Education Representative and the Inclusion Task Force. So, if anybody would like to volunteer for any of those now, yes.
I'd like to volunteer for the payroll warrant.
Wonderful.
Because it sounds exciting.
Yes, Ms. Verella.
I don't want to be excluded from my transportation.
Is transportation on here?
Yeah.
Which is a very fine, after last night's town meeting.
I know. Also, don't see facilities on here.
That's my, that's my mistake.
So, let me see. If I can find, in your forbearance, we can find an electronic copy of those.
Okay, well, you, you're researching, ask a question. What is the difference between facilities and is, is it just facilities and it's not the building, the verbiage is of the facilities committee? Is that what it is? Dr. Pavlicek?
The facilities committee, we meet to talk about the physical setup of the building. We look at oil and gas bidding, we look at, we used to look at more of security, but security's been sort of taken over by the, the Security Committee separately. But it, it really is, you know, looking at when our, we did the Longridge Plan this year, the Longridge Facilities Plan this year, out of that as to, you know, what are our, our capital needs going to be for the next 10 years? You know, what, what are we looking at replacing in the next five years? What are we looking at replacing in the next 10 years? What are we looking at replacing in the next 20 years? That's been the focus of it this last year is we're in the final stages of a report from DRA Architects who are now 90% complete with their report, that will give us these basically four, five-year plans of how the facilities are, are aging and what steps we need to take, you know, lifespan of this kind of tile versus the lifespan of Tarozzo tile in the hallway and things like that. So, it's really concerned with maintaining the, the physical plan.
So, pertinent to that, so my electronic company copy, facilities, myself, Dr. Craighead, Member Rosemarin, transportation, Member Verella, Dr. Craighead, Member Eberhart.
I don't think I'm on transportation, right? I'm on transportation.
You know?
No, I just went to be supportive.
Yeah.
You took me off.
Yeah, she's not really on it.
You asked. All right. So, so simply, Dr. Craighead and Member Verella?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make the correction.
Did, did you get all that?
I thought I signed up for transportation.
Facilities, myself, Dr. Craighead, Member Rosemarin.
Let me ask a question.
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm happy to continue to work with the foundation unless there was someone else who wanted to. I'm happy to do that.
Wonderful.
I, I forgot, sorry. I shouldn't have put that on the list.
Yeah, you, you were on there, but I didn't want to be presumptuous.
And then, I just wanted to ask a quick question from the list that we had the last time at our last meeting. There was a, a committee called the Town School Consolidation Committee? Is that such a committee?
There is. The Town School, it hasn't met in a year though.
Right.
The Town School Consolidation Committee got together initially to look at ways to, as it says, consolidate these things in the town. Their initial recommendation was for the new financial software that were in the, that were in the midst of implementing into the purchase order system on the town side and so forth. And the second recommendation was the, the purchasing officer for the town, which was in coordination with the Town Government Study Committee. Given that those recommendations were made in the spring of 16, the committee, this has been an implementation year, so the committee itself hasn't really met to talk about new initiatives because we're trying to get the first two implemented. So, it's a committee that probably needs to start meeting again, but has been somewhat dormant while we've been in implementation phase of the software and the, and the CPO.
Can I ask, Glenn, to that point, would it be, since it's a consolidation committee, from the town perspective, I know that there was, you know, the switch-over of having a new strong town administrator and Amory Fagan leaving and the adjustment and the budget so that, and like you say, these new things are being implemented, so it wasn't the strongest catalyst to me, but would it, is it chaired by someone on the town side and then we just have a rep there or, or who is driving the boat on it?
A year ago, Mike Zulus was on it from the school committee and actually chaired it.
Oh, he chaired it, okay.
So, I mean, the, the committee decides on a chair.
And I think...
And it was myself, Mike, Amy Dexter from the town, Amory Fagan, I have to look at a couple more people. It was about six people.
And I believe nominally last year, Chairman, former Chairman Walker was on it.
Okay.
So, and Dr. Craighead had expressed interest in that.
Previously.
Previously. So, should we leave that blank for now? We'll leave that blank for now. Okay. Do you have, all right. Excellent. So, as of now, as amended, I have, we have collectively blanks in the Town School Consolidation Committee, the Town Capital Improvement Planning Committee and the Inclusion Task Force. I expect we'll find candidates over the next week or two, but I'm prepared to, I'm prepared to move approval of the list as amended. But I'm prepared to, I'm prepared to move approval of the list as amended here this evening to get these committees off.
Yeah, one question.
Yes.
So Betty, did you, I just, Elaine, Elaine, you definitely want to stay on transportation? And Betty, did you, did you want to be on transportation? You said, or?
I thought that's what I had signed.
That is what you said.
But I can't recall.
I mean, we can have three of us.
I think that was on his list, wasn't that?
I just wanted to formulate, so, just so I know. So all three of us are on it now?
So Member Verella, Dr. Craighead.
Okay, great.
And. And Member White.
Super, all right.
Wonderful.
All right, thank you.
With regard to the Capital Planning Committee, that's a town committee, and we by, by construction have one seat on that. It has generally gone to someone who's been on the facilities subcommittee because most of our capital needs either come from facilities or from IT. And those have been predominant capital needs. So that may narrow down the potential victims.
How often do they meet?
Member Walker was on it last year. I, it met in the fall primarily to formulate the capital plan that goes to the warrant committee for the capital article. I think it's more active in the fall than it is in the spring.
It was former Selectman Hurley. Yeah, he was, so I think there'll be some new membership on the Selectman's side as well.
May I just ask two questions?
Yes.
So, I mean, in terms of the Town School Consolidation Committee, I'd be interested in thinking, I mean, participating in that. I just don't know when it meets or if it's even something that's a realm of possibility for, for me. So that, we can take that, like, that doesn't have to be answered now, but I'm just saying. And then I thought, for the Inclusion Task Force, when does that, like, that didn't meet at all this past year, did it? Oh, it did? That was, Dr.? When does that meet, though? Like, when?
Late afternoon.
Yeah, four to six P.M.
Oh.
It meets monthly. And next year, it may not be monthly. It may be less.
I, I, I thought, I don't know. Did, did you express interest in that, Betty, or no?
I could do that time, so that would work for me.
Well, so I would, I'd be happy to help with that as well. So we can, so we take that off-line as well and then come back and report out to everyone.
And there's no need, yeah, I mean, there's, I'd love to get it all filled tonight, but there's no need to rush ourselves.
Sure.
We'll read your question.
Okay, perfect. Do you want to read that back?
The only one I have a question, did, did Ms. Eberhart just volunteer herself for inclusion?
I did, yes.
I think she did.
I'll be on every, I'm just kidding. Anyway, yeah, it's like Marsha Brady signing up for every club.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you. No, no, thank you. Thank you for noticing the omissions. So the third topic, our transgender and immigration status update. So I think it was the week before, or the meeting before the town election, we had a citizen, Ms. Kessler, I believe, came and spoke to us about the, the changing legal landscape, to put it politely, at the federal and state levels regarding those topics. And it's been an intermittent topic of conversation among ourselves, the, the effort that we are doing to make sure that all members of our community feel welcome and at home in the Milton Public Schools. So to that, to that end, I, I think it would be appropriate if we formulated a response, a letter. And we have a fair amount of literature and paperwork here that was, Ms. Kessler provided to us. So I'm, I'm going to defer that planning process and drafting process to the, the Policy Subcommittee in, in the hopes that they will be able to work through it and bring something back to us.
Okay. Sounds great.
Sounds great.
And unlike in years past, I don't have another laundry list of things for the Policy Subcommittee.
I guess, can I ask one more question?
Ms. Verella, yes.
Amongst the subcommittees that we just talked about, because you said policy, because there's switch, there's some switching around. So amongst ourselves, we can figure out, we know, we know who's chairing some things, but things that have yet to be determined, should we, we can elect that amongst ourselves?
I think you can, you can establish your meeting times and your respective chairs yourselves.
Super.
All right. So we don't have a finance subcommittee report, so I will take, I'll take on the duty of acknowledging Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Pavelcheck for the amounts of our vendor warrants. Do you have?
So we have, I believe, three, since I wasn't at the one, the last meeting before the election. But I, I believe these are the three current ones. So we have Vendor Warrant forty-one dated April thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, for two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Do you want to do them serially, or?
Why don't we do the first two, since I think you have, the signatures in there submitted, and we'll defer on the third one.
Okay. And the second one is to approve Vendor Warrant forty-three, which was dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, and was for, for four-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Wonderful. So I'm going to move approval of Vendor Warrant forty-one and forty-three in the amount specified by Assistant Superintendent Dr. Pavelcheck. Seconded by Craighead. Any discussion?
Are these related to food service at all that I can or cannot vote?
These two are not.
Okay.
All right. In that case, all in favor? Unanimous. Wonderful. All right. Old business. No one's here for a citizen to speak. So next meeting agenda items. I'm sure we can fill it if nobody comes up with anything.
I, just to say that I'll give an update on transportation and traffic safety on that.
All right. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before your, your school choice vote.
Oh, yes.
You have your open form, and then you have your school choice vote at your next meeting.
It's not going to be the next meeting.
Wow.
At the next meeting, we will have an executive session. There will be paperwork for that, that you can pick up in the superintendent's office. So if you stop by the superintendent's office at some point in the next two weeks, pick up the paperwork and peruse it, and then that way everyone will be all set for the executive session.
Okay. I have a question. So will that be available, like, starting tomorrow or Monday, or when?
Give it to you tonight.
Okay, okay, great.
Oh, and I just have a quick question. So when will, maybe not the next meeting, but the meeting after, will we figure out a schedule for our summer?
Yes.
And then, like, we're going to have a retreat or? Because I think it'd be nice at some point to sort of like have a mid-review of the goals that we had set and then see where we're headed with that before we move forward for the next.
I second that if we can discuss dates at the next meeting for summer meetings and our summer retreat.
Good. So for the benefit of our new members, every summer, we typically take a block of four or five hours and sit down and work through our goals for the upcoming year. We have done it both on weekend days and on weekdays and at different times during the day. So bring your summer schedules and work something out.
They are open public meetings, so you may not want to have it at your house.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Wonderful.
A second?
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.